Basically, this is all stemming from, I am getting quite a few, probably three or four different developers interested in doing townhomes. But up until now, I've kind of just told them not a whole lot we can do because it's just not in the ordinance at all, period.
This, this town, townhomes like for sale or for rent?
It could be either, so we can, we can talk about that too. They normally are sold, you know, be simple, even though they're on one parcel together. They're individual units that get sold. Um, the ones who have spoken to me, their intention is to sell them, not to rent them.
Okay. Do they have to be on county water and sewer?
So that's what we're gonna talk about.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll just get rolling.
Yeah.
And just pop right on the, okay. So a potential location, so obviously, we don't want to allow these everywhere in the county. Um, I think they would probably fit best in either R1 or R2, or maybe both. Um, R1 is the majority of the village, probably 99% of the village. Um, and R2, there may be two or three parcels that are zoned R2, which is what allows multifamily, but does not allow single family. Um, so we could decide if we want to make it more open to allow it in R1 and R2, or to just restrict it to R2 that allows multifamily.
Well, the only thing is it, you know, the R1 and R2 means one and two acre zone. So basically, and, and you're not going to be able to do that with townhomes. You're looking at 30,000 square feet, lots, because it's a little strip of land. Where the firewall is, is the property line between.
Well.
If you do it like.
We can talk about that, but in other places that I've worked, I think this is a lot easier to do it this way, is to not do it into separate lots. It would be one, say, 10 acre parcel, and each individual townhome would be sold, be simple, but they would all be on one lot together. Hey, David.
Hey, I think you're looking for, I mean, for that, I think you're probably looking for a legal nightmare as far as deeds and mortgages and stuff like that. I mean, no bank is going to own you $300,000 for a townhome and they don't stay sitting on your land.
Doing Richmond, don't they?
Yeah, I mean, most places, that is how it is, yeah. I've pulled some other counties and that.
My involvement was.
That is how it is.
Northern Virginia, and you had to own the actual lot.
We're, we're literally on the first one, just talking about R1 and R2.
Okay.
About which area we.
If I mean, that's fine, if it's, if it's acceptable, I mean, I didn't know, I didn't think, I thought the banks would up with a brave cane about that.
Well, it's.
That'd be up to the developer.
Yeah, true.
I think he either gonna have to finance it or find somebody.
Definitely not the first time anybody ever built townhomes. Definitely not the first time anybody ever.
Right.
Well, they wouldn't be asking about it the first time.
So kind of going along those lines, like you already brought up, if we wanted to restrict it to just areas within the sanitary district, which frankly, I think is a solid move, um, that would pretty much cross out anywhere that's not in the village. There is some R1 in Jetersville, but there's never going to be water and sewer up there. So that R1 would not be eligible for townhomes.
Well, see, a lot of, a lot of Chesterfield's infrastructure, because I did most of my work in Chesterfield, a lot of Chesterfield's infrastructure, if you was, if it was outside of the area that had water and sewer, yeah, build it, but you would have to put water and sewer to it. And how they got their system expanded by the developer's paperwork. It ain't cheap.
I don't think it gonna come from the courthouse to Jetersville.
No, they're not gonna be in Jetersville. What I'm saying is like, at 0681 or somewhere like that, they may be willing to extend the sewer or the water out, you know.
Well, and that, that could be a consideration. We could put it in there that you can do it, but it has to be on water and sewer. And I think that would also help us kind of restrict where they could pop up.
I think that's, that'd be my recommendation.
Okay.
Make it required, because you're talking about a lot of water and a lot of sewage. I mean, you could get away with one of these huge drain fields, but you know, that's looking down the road, that's gonna be a problem too. You have ten units feeding into it. I would say if it's only water and sewer, then it's, it's not a, it's not a problem.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, give them the option.
And we need water and sewer customers, so.
Water and sewer after their development, put it in. But, but the thing is, it's not theirs, it's not private. When they get done, they gotta turn it over to county after they get it installed. That's what Chesterfield's always done.
They probably wouldn't want to fool with it. That's not something you'd want to fool with, anyway.
Well, the average last guy that wanted to put an apartment out here, wouldn't even build sidewalks for 300 yards, so I mean.
Well, and if they're on county water and sewer, they can do it on smaller parcels because they don't have to allow that extra acreage. And it'll bring the county water and sewer money because we really need customers. Okay, so it seems like the general consensus is yes, water and sewer, if it's not already there, you would be on the hook for doing that expansion. Okay?
How much, or what areas do we have available now that would fit into this? Just off the top of your head, one is the one.
In the village?
One of them, I assume the one down here that tried to put apartments on.
Yeah, that's got water.
That is one, um, there is one right, on the other side of Kent's. Um, there's three lots behind there, behind that one house that's right on the road. Um, the people purchasing that, that are under contract for that are interested in maybe doing some townhomes. Um, at the end of Church Street, we've starting, been starting to get some nibbles on that again. Um, and townhomes have been brought up. And then there's still that pretty sizable acreage near the middle school across the street that has already been next to Russell Grove, that's already been rezoned R2.
Yeah.
That could potentially have some.
Yeah, the only problem with that one is I was involved in surveying that when they bought, when Pemberton bought it, is it, there's a strip of land, the easement for the sewer, that's the main, that courthouse branch. The sewer, that person, all that easement's over on that one person's, like 15 or 20 feet today on the sewer line. And they would let Pemberton give it, get easement across it. So they're gonna have to pump it back up to the top of the hill.
Okay.
School sewer, and then let it come back down. And that's, that was cost prohibitive, I mean.
That could explain why.
Twenty million dollars.
Right.
And so that's why that, that never got developed. If they could, if that person would, whoever owns that land, would have given them an easement to tie into the sewer in the bottom, where it could gravity flow it, it probably would have already been developed.
Right.
Are we changing the verbiage, we mentioned in townhouses, is that, are we still allowing apartments? Or we kind of moving towards townhouse?
Apartments will still be the same kind of deal where they would have to rezone to R2. Um, but the issue is townhomes, we don't have listed as a permitted use anywhere. So we're, but we're getting a lot of calls about it, people interested in it. Um, so just wanted to discuss where and what zoning districts we might want to allow that in. I think maybe restricting it to R2 would give us a little more control, just because the majority of the village is already zoned R1. So someone, if we allow it in R1, they could just come in and do it. But like with apartments, if we do it for R2, they would have to come before you all. So if it's not a good spot, it's not a good spot. Town, if we did it in R1, they'd kind of.
They'd have to come through it.
Right.
Right.
So that would give us a little more control over, but I, I don't, I guess I'd need to know how, like, or should we are in townhomes?
I think it's useful.
I think we need for, need homes now.
Yeah.
They can be right expensive probably, but, but that's the reason I was wondering, you know, at one time, wasn't it a development supposed to go in? Somewhere around the golf course way back there?
Way back, I was gonna buy that, but now, now between Tommy Woodbury, Renee's husband, and, and their daughter and son-in-law, they own all of it, will be developing that. But one time, somebody was gonna put like, like townhouses and a restaurant and all that stuff in there. But as it turned out, the guy that made all those big plans, he, only thing he does is sell building materials. And whoever, because Tom Cox was gonna buy it, but then the guy said, well, you gotta follow your building to me, or I won't sell it. And, and make, sign the contract, and Cox wouldn't do it. So that, that's all that guy, he was trying to build up some nice fancy buildings to make a lot of money selling building materials, but he was never going to develop it himself.
There is also that piece of land, and I had someone call about it. And you, both of you, I don't know how long ago this happened, right in front of Kathy's time, near Tom Cox's little center, some very, very large development was, I don't know if it was plotted, but it still shows up on our GIS and on our tax maps for.
Otterburn Estate?
Hundreds of lots.
Otterburn Estates, that.
Right on, it was right on 36.
Yeah, but, yeah, but now, now, most of that's been, a lot of people, they were like little 25 by 100 foot lots.
Yes, yes.
But that's, yep, Otterburn, but now, now, most of it, Goodman's owns most of it.
Okay.
Goodman's bought, there was a few out parcels they finally tracked down and bought. And then Tom Cox bought the ones around, just, yeah, that's all been merged.
They're all merged?
Yeah, but that was back in, that was.
Yeah, it doesn't show up as being merged, but it is one now.
That was back.
That's first, I think it might be for sale because I had someone call about it.
That was back when, when Amelia Springs was a resort. And they were figuring, selling people's lot, there were people who came up there to Boston's lots, were camping in those lots, and driving up to Amelia Springs to the, to enjoy their springs and stuff.
Okay.
People coming out of Richmond and other, other.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, oh, a hundred years ago.
Mineral Springs.
Yeah, and the people were gonna go up and soak in the springs, but they were, they stay on their own land. And it was a big plan, but it never really developed. Some of that, some of it got sold. That's just like that.
But does it have sewer too?
Yeah, it does now, didn't then.
Oh.
That's just like that Foster Golf Course thing up there. They sold some of those lots, and there's not even a street or nothing in there. I mean, I don't know how they.
He men and pulled the first building permit for that.
Did they really?
They did.
They must have put some streets.
Did.
Foster's golf, playing golf, big golf.
But those are all private streets.
Yeah.
Which thankfully, we don't allow anymore, but yeah, that's good.
Foster's Lane?
No, Foster's Farm, it's like, it's a huge development that, it's kind of like a resort development. You can only live, it's only second homes, it can't be a primary dwelling. Um, and you can only live there max of six months a year unless you work there.
Put in a championship golf course and all that stuff and everything and.
Helicopter pad and everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I surveyed all that, I remember, I remember all that. They sold some of those, some of those lots though.
Foodborne.
Anything to get in there too, I don't know, what you did about that?
And it's cut over.
It's all cut over.
Yeah, it's, it's cut over, y'all won't go into.
Oh. They bought a lot of them, Aubrey Anderson, and he'd already cut the timber replanted in times. It's thick as, thick as a dog's hair back in there.
So that one might be the only one, we'll see, we'll see.
But no, there've been several developments over the years that have been planned out, and it's never really developed around, in a million.
But there are still a handful of parcels in the village that could suit townhomes that already have water and sewer.
Well, I mean, the water sewer, it, it goes all the way out to where Patton was gonna do that development on 0681, doesn't it? And there were firehouses right here in front of her house?
Think so.
I think so. So I mean, you could go that far out on 0681 and still do a development.
What's the name of 0681?
Hometown.
I remember the numbers, I remember the names.
Probably Prozable, right. I think pretty sure the water sewer, right in between. Right in front of her house, I don't think.
What about the land right there behind Dick's place? It runs from Dunn Street to Church Street? That's like 11 acres?
Um, it's a little, it's two parcels, I think total, it might, it's either 18 or 21, because there's two. Um, the woman who owned it passed away and the children got it. I know quite a few people have reached out to them trying to get that going. That would be a great spot because it's already super residential, but I, I don't know if they're willing to, to do that.
Whatever happened with the Redstone Land out there, New Potts property, 300 acres?
All of that with Liberty University.
Is it, I see somebody, somebody's building a house out there on 0681, I mean, on 38 on part of it. It's a very new house out there. They must have cut out a lot and sold it.
Yeah, maybe so.
If it's a couple of, a couple of different parcels, maybe that was one of them, one of the parcels or something, but.
Could have been a separate parcel, down out about Liberty.
But see, that had, that had access to down here where the ball fields are, and it also had access off of Green Street. And at the end of Deacon Street went straight through, and in front of it on Route 38 too. At the end of, it also ended, it went into, at the end of Dunn Street, also connected to it.
Yeah, I think so.
They had like five or six different accesses to it.
Yeah, Liberty's got a tight hold on all of that. Yes.
They were selling some of them.
He didn't buy his way to heaven.
Alright, so location, I feel like we have a pretty good grasp on where we generally like to see these, okay?
So you're just gonna set it on R2, or you're doing just R2 and 1?
What, what do y'all want to do?
What's that?
Well, R2, you got control. For one, we have no control. I'd go R2.
That's what I'm thinking.
And that way you have some control.
Right.
Because you may want to know what size townhouses, what price range.
Yep.
Um, I don't know, you sell these townhouses?
Not typically, but if we had someone in the county, we'd.
No, but I mean, have y'all.
Much history now, personally.
I feel like a lot of the townhome developments get done by large, large companies like Ryan Homes, and they sell them themselves, I guess, unless, until they're resold. And Ryan Homes has been calling quite a bit, wanting to expand into Amelia. Um, they had been looking at, at the lot at the end of Church Street. Um, but were under the impression that the county was gonna do the improvements to Church Street from the Baptist church all the way back. That was not the case, so it priced them out of what.
They're looking, Davis property looking at the Llewellyn property.
Davis.
Davis.
And there's a ton of wetlands and stuff back there, so I think they were having.
He's got, he's got old ponds back there and stuff.
Yeah.
Then somebody was looking, looking to develop the Llewellyn property a few years ago too. And Devilto's looking at buying that if he could get the subdivision approved.
It's true.
All of his place, which straight from standing in on the, on the left, crossing.
Okay, so no, they said, okay, so this, the parcel they were looking at is owned by Steve Davis's ex-wife. So I assumed that was it, but this is the one that Ronnie picked up. Um.
I think Ronnie did buy the Llewellyn property, but I don't think they ever developed it.
Okay.
We're gonna make too much sidewalks all the way up to there.
This is an app.
Yeah, yeah.
Land good.
I'm big on sidewalks.
You love a sidewalk.
I think it is like a subscription, like five dollars a month or something.
Kind of spend small fortune building sidewalks for pedestrian connectivity all around by the schools and everything. Why aren't we making people do it everywhere else?
What was that?
I said, the county putting all the sidewalk going out by the schools, lot stuff, we should be doing it everywhere, making people put in sidewalks. And I think that was the pedestrian connectivity project thing that it's a year to come.
Alright, location, I think we're good. Alright, density, so with these, there's normally some kind of restriction to how many dwelling units per acre you can have. Um, for apartments, we do eight dwelling units per acre for one story, 10 for two-story, 12 for three-story. Um, the comp plan for the village wants a density of between four dwelling units per acre to a max of 12. Um, 12 is, is pretty, pretty intense, but I don't know that four is a great use of space. Um, so I don't know if y'all have any feedback on what you think would be an ideal range for townhomes, or how many you would like in a row. Most people say you can only have rows of three, and then rows of three, and then rows of three.
Well, it depends on how classy the development is, what's it gonna look like then? Really, you gotta need to see a plan. If it looks like crap, no, we don't want many units, but if they're gonna do a really quality layout and make it attractive, then you know, I don't see any problem going to 12, I mean, but, I mean, you know, it's not an answer, but.
Are we trying to make it so they don't have to come to us to do every little thing? We're trying to make it like more streamlined?
What do you mean?
Where they don't have to come to us to like do this, or, I thought maybe, I don't know.
Well, if they come to get to R2, they're gonna have to have a plan as to what they're gonna put in.
Right.
Yeah, if we don't want them to have to come to us, then doing it in R1 and R2 would make sense. But going with just the R2 is going to make them have to come before us.
So, so you, so you will be able to see whether it's three, eight, 12, 15, whatever they gonna put in there.
In the next page, that's, that's the third part of this is design, because we can, a lot of places put that in there of saying, okay, if you want to do townhomes, you have to use at least two facades. You need to have vinyl and brick or stone and vinyl. And I mean, I don't want to get too in the weeds, we're not Chesterfield, we're not a large locality, but.
You want.
You would look nice.
Right in the village that.
Well, and that was one of the things from, what's the name out there? When I thought like, oh, 0681. Pat, 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 when they were going to do that development out there, that was one of the things that we had mentioned to them is to keep it kind of historic looking appearance to the buildings to fit in with the, the scheme of the courthouse. And that was, that was one of the things that we, I don't know, some hall glass front building, that wouldn't fit in at all.
Right, exactly.
They never did come up with a decent plan.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't listen. I think, on that thing, they kept coming back. They wanted to do it with the government. And we said, you know, you come back with a plan, say you don't meet setbacks. Okay, they said, you know, so then they go back and they change it, and then come back the same thing. You still don't meet setbacks. And finally, we just said, no, if you're not gonna, if you're not gonna, and they would just, they would listen and listen, oh yeah, yeah, we'll fix that. Come back the same crap, and so we just finally shot it down.
You know, I, I kind of like the idea of, are we, are we through this part, or we done here yet?
Not yet, hold on, we're, we're just about to get there. Um, okay, so if we nail down some level of design standards.
I don't think you'd want 12.
Okay.
Personally.
Alright.
Not, not with what we've got available. Now, it might be if you're hit after on 0681 or something, but I think what you're talking about in here, I'd say if you got to eight, two groups of four or something like that.
Okay, okay.
Or, that's how I would feel. Um, because you, because I guess you figure the houses here and courthouses on top of each other, so. I guess most of those, how many, how much is in there, half acre, third of an acre?
You probably, that little house I used to live in down on Church Street behind Bucky Shell, was on like 0.27 acres.
Yeah.
Yeah, and R1, you, if you have water and sewer, your lot can be 15,000 square feet, so tiny.
I like the eight, I mean, it ain't hitting the highest side in the middle. It's kind of hidden in the middle where.
Now, if you had a pretty good sized lot, it'd be a different story.
So, and that's a consideration too, kind of like with rural clusters, you could do something like, okay, the max is eight, but if you have X amount in open space, you can have two more.
Yeah, something like that.
Something we can toss around.
Or should we just keep it at eight and say, if you want to exceed that number, you gotta come get a special exception permit? That kind of puts us back in control of it.
That's, that's.
That's the best way.
It's not a bad idea either.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be better. That way you can look at the actual, you know, you can see exactly what they're gonna do.
That, that's what I was.
12 may work someplace, but not work everywhere.
Every place, that, that'd be good.
But the minimum being four.
Yeah.
They wouldn't want to go below four.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think the developer's gonna do that, it won't be.
Yeah.
But they need it profitable.
So a max of eight, and then a special exception permit if you want to go beyond that density, okay?
That, that kind of puts us in, gives us options to look at it.
Yep.
And say, no, this is a big mistake, or we love it, one or the other.
And if they, I mean, if they come in, they're pretty fancy, you know, only want to do three, I don't think it'd be turned down, but, you know.
Well, in the special exception permit, we could phrase it as if you want to do something outside of the density. So that could capture that too, if somebody's just wanting to make three.
But still, would you cash propers, would you cash propers on these things?
Yep, yep, for rezonings, yes, yep. Want to go beyond, okay. Sweet, okay. Alright, design standards. David, did you?
You know, when we were talking about the apartments, I did go out and see a lot of people. And that was some of the, a lot of people said, we gotta have them, they need to fit. And it seems like since we're doing all this, this may be the time to set the standards. To say, you know, it's brick, vinyl, color, metal roof.
We could, that could transfer over to apartments and things like that too, so.
Kind of, kind of, what, what the phrase that stuck to me is, is kind of set the county up now for the next 20 years.
Yeah.
So it, it blends, and it looks like a, a village.
You're a farmer, you're a farmer, what would be the best?
I mean.
All burns.
I know. That's what I'm saying, but, but.
They're starting right now down there on 38.
That's, that's 10 by 10 shed.
Yeah, I saw the cost.
But I'm saying, it's metal roof, more expensive, but sure, probably better now. I like the old ones.
They're colored, you colored metal and stuff now, they look pretty.
That's really nice.
I mean, you look at the nursing home, that's a metal, green, metal roof, courthouse.
It's hard to put it on courthouse, tell other people they can't use it.
And, and I.
I didn't say not to use it, but I said, you know, sometimes you can get by a pretty cheap shingles. A lot of these new shingles don't last too long. You know, one time you had what, 30, 40 year shingles. Now, if you can get 20 year out, you're doing pretty good. And with wind and all.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we talked about with Patton and that development, David trapped up there. We wanted to have a, a colonial slash historic look to match the surroundings and the older houses and the buildings and the courthouse and all that stuff.
And that was.
And there was no contemporary type structures.
You know, so this may be the time to, to start setting that up.
Yeah.
Because I was looking the other day, and was, I forgot it was on some advertisement, I believe, but they even got roofs now that actually look like, you know, they make it on there to make them look like shingles, that's metal, you know.
I mean, vinyl's good, but, you know, it, it's not gonna last.
You ever seen the Great Wolf Lodge, dinner, it looked like a huge log building, that's vinyl.
Vinyl side, yep.
It's over with it.
Yep.
Yeah, it's all vinyl.
Yeah, and the facade, whether it's vinyl or, I like the two different, that does give a blend.
Yeah, yeah.
Gives it a little more character.
Especially, I like stone, I think it's pretty.
Yeah.
Well, we could put all three in, I mean, we need, we need to have it where it looks nice.
Sure. Well, you could have at least two, what you had in there, at least two.
Yeah, because I think having either all brick or all vinyl can sometimes not look.
Look a little cheaper.
Yeah, yes.
Especially all vinyl.
Mm-hmm. And I don't think, I mean, some places get into the weeds of like the percentage that has, I don't think we need to dive into that, just that there, you need to have two different building materials.
And if they come to you with the plan, you have a pretty good idea of what it's gonna be, and you can suggest what maybe you need for.
Are you talking about the facade, so you want two different types on the front?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the front.
It's not unusual to see them, it's got like vinyl side and on the sides of the rear, but a brick front.
That's, that's a good, that's something good to bring up, yeah. So two different on the front, that's a good distinction, okay.
I know what you're saying already, requiring use of two different exterior materials on the front, or the facade, which is in front.
Okay, um.
Say that again, is the facade considered the front?
Facade is the front of the building.
Front of the building.
And so, 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 you know, you could have vinyl on all three sides and have a brick front or a stone front. I mean, when, when it's written, it's saying you want two, two different types of materials on the facade.
Yes.
So you could, so you go build, do your first floor in brick, your second floor in vinyl? I mean, you see what, I'm afraid that's gonna. Well, what do y'all think?
Well, we would be able to see what they expect, and then we can, we can make suggestions at that point with this R2.
Yeah, I mean, if it comes down to it, and if it's their building materials that are gonna make or break it, I feel like they would be willing to work with it and be like, okay.
Right.
You know, we'll, we'll tweak this a little bit.
I mean, and it could be like, I've got two on my house. My house has got a brick facade on one side of it, and then under the porch, everything's all vinyl.
Right.
Which will qualify as two different facades. But it's, the facade is the front, the front of the building, the front of the house.
I just, I mean.
Firewalls, is that?
Mine's her.
Stone?
It's, yeah, firewall's not being insulated, 12 inch center block.
David and Roy, a maximum height for these? What can the county, what is the maximum height the county currently serve?
35 feet.
35.
Because we have two 35 foot ladders, the fire department has two 35, five foot ladders in the county, Cause we have two thirty-five foot ladders, the fire department has two thirty-five, five foot ladders in the county, and that's the one thing Patton then wanted to go.
How many stories is that? Three?
Two.
Two?
Good, yeah.
Two, ten, okay.
And they had, they wanted, they, Patton then wanted to go hot taller.
Yeah.
I said, fine, all you need is about a fire truck and a fire department and ladder truck, you will, we'll change the rules. Oh, great, how much one of those? Three hundred thousand, a million dollars? Oh, no, we're not gonna do that.
I had one thing for you. Yeah, the second thing that stuck with me when the gentleman was telling me this was porches. Maybe I had require some porches instead of just a building with a door.
Oh, yeah.
Love it.
With that.
Porches or stoops or something.
Something covered that would make it look.
To look through it now, but I've put what those other four counties are doing and they do add in things like that. Um, so I, I think that's a great idea.
I think some sort of porch or stoop would be, look nicer.
And, and back to the fire truck, the thirty-five foot, I'm all, is that thirty-five to the eve or is that thirty-five to the peak?
To the tip, to the peak.
Peak, okay.
Okay.
That's, that's what's all about, my way I've always understood it.
And that's what our.
This actually built at thirty-five foot.
That's peak, okay.
Okay.
So, that would be pretty much two stories, maybe a little lower.
And that's because we don't have any way to get up there. We had to.
Yeah.
Then, then a hole in the roof or something.
Yeah, no, that's.
I wouldn't want to cut a hole in the roof off a ladder anyway.
Yeah, chainsaw, cut a hole pretty quick.
Yeah. Strap it, you strap to the ladder.
I would expect to say if, if we're cutting a hole in a multifamily dwelling, it's gonna be a ladder truck sitting there.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have one though.
All right. Um, landscaping. Um. Minimum buffers, if we want to require a twenty-five foot buffer around the sides and rear, um, we don't have to do that. I don't know which else.
I think property landscape, it doesn't need that, it's gonna look, look nice, but take somebody, I mean, I don't know how you stop somebody, if we make it too loose, then you'll get junk. Somebody's gonna come and try to cut a corner like, I hate to pick on him, but like Pendleton. That crap they tried to put in there on a locative property, we didn't want that. People that'll be there two or three weeks and leave or a month and leave, we, we didn't want that. And so, but if you take somebody's gonna come in there and do a quality development, like I think the apartment guy was going to, I think it would be nicely landscaped and all, nice entrance, nice landscaping and all that stuff. So, I mean.
Well, if it's a townhouse and he's gonna sell on a pretty good price, I'd say it's have to look pretty good.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Even rental property, he's gonna want a pretty good price. It's not gonna be some cheapo.
Especially if I'm gonna pay three, four hundred thousand dollars for it and I don't get the land it says on it, yeah, it'd be real nice.
So.
Would it be often, out of the way to say the buffer has to be the height of the building?
You'd never get a thirty-five foot.
That'd be pretty high.
Unless you had existing timber around it or something.
I would say, you know. I mean, I would. What's the setback? What would be the setback from, from property life?
We, that's something we need to talk about.
I would say, I would say a twenty-five foot.
I'd say you won't want it there at twenty-five.
What the underlying R two is, um, which, I'll tell you and.
I'd say the, the.
Twenty-five foot.
Twenty-five foot landscape buffer, not natural buffer.
Yeah.
I think that's, when you say buffer, a lot of people think natural, but with honey circles and stuff like that, just a twenty-five foot landscape buffer, they can go in and plant whatever they want, trunks and stuff.
So, right now, the setbacks for the front are sixty-five, the rear is thirty-five, and the sides have to be at least fifteen, but both sides have to equal thirty-five, so essentially a fifteen and a twenty.
Or ten and thirty and twenty.
Probably, that probably wouldn't be too bad, especially if it's landscape.
That was Paul, Patton subdivision, they wanted ten foot setbacks in the front. But they were gonna have businesses downstairs, that's what they tried to play on, but they were having apartments upstairs. It's residential, you gotta, and they, they would never come off the ten foot, so it's just about sitting there.
Um, so I found for Powhatan, so like you were saying, requiring maybe a porch or something, they have this entire list, so I don't know if we'd be open to, they have to do at least one of these things. In addition to wall offsets, the facades have to provide a minimum of three of the following features. Dormer windows, recessed entrance, covered porch, pillars, posts, columns, bay windows. Um, multiple windows with a minimum four inch wide trim, integrated planners. So, are we open to any of those kind of things?
The pillows definitely, you know, kind of. It's like, you know, like it all depends on how they got the fronts, then they got the little small, you know, it had to be the big, you know, like the, um, but I think the pillows sometime, you know, the porch pillows like is, is nice.
Just recesses in the entrance, I don't know if that qualifies as a porch.
You need something to break the front of it.
Well, they have to use at least three, according to that.
Right.
Well, that, that would give them an option.
What was the list again?
Here, let me see. It's on attachment A two. Um, section Z, facade articulation. So, it's A, B, C, D, and then A two, B two, C two, D two. So, in A two, this is what Pow, A two is Powhatan.
See, dormer windows would be on the second floor.
Yeah, I wouldn't think.
You're looking.
I wouldn't think you'd want them on the first floor.
Well, I'm looking at, I'm looking where she was looking at page, at page three or four, where it's got the picture of the building. That's just on my table.
With that little.
They don't really have a dormer, do they?
No, they didn't have, they didn't have any dormers, but it's got some other stuff in there, like they're, well, it's not recessed entrance, it's actually entrance, actually sticking out, but. Got a cover, like a covered porch. They don't, they got bay windows on that picture.
You may have a choice of those, what's that, eight now of them? That would give them a little, a little leeway.
Yeah, and I like that it says they have to have a minimum of three. So, there at least be some variability.
But you could specify a covered porch as one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could, you could say a covered porch and then.
A choice.
One or two of this list. Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
That makes it a little more up to date. That way you guarantee we're gonna get a porch on.
Okay.
Whether they put columns on the porch or.
Just hang it over.
Hang it over, whatever, but I mean, still look like a, when you come in there, you don't get all the water in.
Don't get all the coverage.
And I assume he's have a back door too?
You have to, you gotta have a emergency access case as your fire. Emergency egress.
So, the.
I did notice some, some of the new stuff is coming out, Jeff Davis, they're having inside garages. I think we probably ought to get into that.
I was just gonna ask that, if y'all had preference, cause some places don't let you have your garage in the front, it has to be on the side or the rear, I don't know.
Makes your insurance choices.
I know Chesterfield now, they got the garages, they got the apartments in one spot, and then they got a row of garages side by side away from the building.
So, we, yeah.
That's fine, I, I can probably deal with that. They're one, they call them the chain. I mean, the front of the part of the building is apartments and windows and the back hallway, you come in, your garage, you come underneath it, come into the building.
Under, underneath.
Underneath it. I'm, I'm fine with external, interior garages.
I agree with you on that. Yeah, I agree with you.
I mean, if you were doing duplexes, the guy was gonna do the duplexes down there, I think it was down, down there in, in Redfield. He was talking about having a garage, attached garage, but it was gonna be one-story duplexes, like old people can pull in, get out, handicap accessible door and all that. But if you look into a three-story or two-story townhouse, they're not gonna be handicap accessible, anybody's gonna put an elevator down. So, they don't need to attach a garage really.
Okay.
So, we don't need that fire load?
No.
Did we decide that landscaping buffer not necessary?
I would, I would, I would put, I would leave the landscaping buffer in there.
Okay.
That'll make them.
Let them, they have a choice.
Dress it up.
Okay, of how many feet?
Twenty-five is quite.
Twenty-five?
Is this in addition to the regular buffer?
The setback?
Yeah, yeah.
So, the, the buffer could be within the setback. It doesn't have to be the buffer, then the setback starts. So, if they do a twenty-five foot buffer, they could put it as close, I guess, as they would want it to the, the actual.
Dress it in front of it a little bit, I think.
Yeah, okay.
You call, make sure you call it a landscape buffer, not a natural buffer.
Right, okay.
Another thing you're talking about, you, you don't dress it on this list, but in my opinion, I think we should, should ask, ask them do, if you talk about a lot of town, townhomes, a lot of residents, I would do a boulevard type entrance where they come out and they turn right or left.
Okay.
Not have one, not have a one width entrance. What do you call a boulevard?
Yeah.
It's got a owling in the middle.
Right.
You got two exits, one going left and right. That's what I would.
My only concern with getting into the entrance stuff is I just don't know all of VDOT's regulations, and I don't want to say you need a boulevard entrance and then.
VDOT says you.
Then it doesn't work out. That's my only concern.
And VDOT doesn't like them. Now, they did, they did put one in down at Redfield, and then at, at, at Oak Springs Plantation.
Yeah, theirs looks wonderful.
And VDOT, VDOT, see, we were gonna put one in Morpheum Meadows when I did that subdivision, that's why the road is so wide. But they, VDOT kicked it back, said they didn't want to ma- ma- manage it. But I think as long as you put some sort of a, a maintenance agreement on the landscape, and VDOT's not gonna landscape it and manage it. I think if somebody else does, they're accept, they're receptive to it as long as somebody else is taking care of it.
Okay.
That's been my experience with VDOT, getting entrances approved, is that they, if they want, if they are, if somebody else is willing to maintain it, they don't mind the boulevard type entrance, but somebody else has gotta. They're not gonna go out there and landscape it for you.
Right.
And keep, and maintain it. But I can understand that. They just need some section to watch each other work.
Okay.
I mean, that, I think that would dress it up a lot, make it look prettier. And it would, and it would restrict the traffic flow as far as people getting backed up at seven o'clock in the morning trying to go to work or whatever.
I guess thinking of that though, okay, say it's four townhomes, if you only have seven people living there, they're not gonna have an HOA. The developer, if their sole fee simple, is no longer gonna be involved, and I don't want it to look like crap.
Could, could we say a boulevard entrance is recommended?
Yes.
And just do.
But if you do this, there has to be some kind of maintenance agreement of upkeep.
They would have to work out the maintenance agreement with VDOT. I mean, nobody's gonna get a driveway unless you get approved by VDOT anyway.
You just, you just said something. Townhomes, you buy the townhome, who takes care of the cutting the grass? Is that the HOA, some type of maintenance?
It can differ, um. Normally, I wanna say, if it's not in a townhome neighborhood, like if it's just a strip of four townhomes, they would maintain their own yards. If they do the parcel at the end of Church Street and we've got fifty, there might be some sort of community maintenance.
If they're not gonna, they own the land, I think generally they have to cut their own grass and do their own landscaping, but if they're owning the building and not owning the land, generally you have a lawn company comes and takes care of all the landscaping, cutting the grass.
They might pay some kind of monthly fee to.
They do.
Have us that.
They pay, they pay a maintenance fee or a landscaping fee.
Well, what you want, say it's four townhomes, the two on the end don't do any landscaping, two in the middle, you know, you only got one person in it that wants to put some bushes up in front of the house. Any way to avoid that?
When they do, I mean, it could be treated the same way as a regular subdivision, they could put in those kind of covenants and restrictions saying you have to do X, Y, and Z.
Okay.
Um, and then at that point, if they don't, the HOA would move in on them, or if it looks bad enough, the blight ordinance and environmental ordinance would move in on them.
I would think the developer would, would be, take care of that, cause he don't want to sell two nice landscape ones in the middle, have two.
Right.
Those on the outside, they'll never sell.
Yeah, well, I was, I was meaning, after this, oh, down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
What comes up.
These things are cheap. I, I don't think.
Most of the people.
River raft move in there.
Most of the time, people that, that bad guy that can afford those houses, most of them will, is willing to take care. Nine, nine times out of ten, not, you know, you always get one or two, but.
They're no cheaper than buying a house out on a ten acre lot.
On it.
You know?
Okay.
More, more expensive, really.
Probably.
Yeah, those new ones near like Publix and, oh my gosh, they are like four hundred thousand dollars. It's insane. All right, parking and lighting, um. I don't know how deep y'all want to get into that, if we want to require like, um, planning islands in there, in the parking lots to make it look nice, um, streetlights in the parking lots. I guess for safety. Um. I don't know if y'all have any thoughts on that?
We don't have any really lighting requirement in the village now, so I don't.
Okay.
Well, we do have lights all around them. Or elsewhere, so.
Yeah. But you wonder, you know, they put bright lights and the people on each side of it said, darn, too much light, like down here, talking about putting lights on this field. People, people were fussing about it, way off, you know?
And townhomes could be a little different because you're not parking in a, well, depending, you're not parking in a huge shared parking lot, you might be pulling into your garage or pulling into your driveway.
You think as far as your parking spaces, we should say one handicap per every four units, maybe, or something?
Is that enough?
May not be.
It may not be. But you can't be persona handicap, which is two-story.
Right.
Right.
And you got steps going in it.
Okay.
I'd say most of them not gonna go in ground level, you can go in a step or two.
Do one handicap for every two units? And then have them, have them, have at least two parking spaces for each unit.
I'd say at least two parking spaces for a unit, for sure.
Three.
Say that again?
Three, three, three parks, I tell you what, for every two units, one handicap and six parking spaces for every two units.
One plus six, or one of the six being handicap?
Well, you could probably do that, that'd be two and a half per unit, it's not a, yeah, one, one plus, plus five that are not handicap for every two, every two units. It said if a husband and wife live there and they got a car each, that gives them two spaces, and then there's one left over they can fight over.
Okay.
With the neighbors.
I, I would kind of like to see some lighting.
I think so.
Hey, if you, and that didn't hit me till you said handicap, you know, you get a elderly person, they gonna feel comfortable coming into a lighted area.
Almost everybody will.
And when the squad goes there or the fire truck goes there, we have a little light too.
Yeah.
To help us out.
And I guess that is gonna be dependent, I don't know that we want to require a parking lot, because if they're gonna have a garage and maybe even their own private driveway, I think it's overkill to have a parking lot as well.
Yeah.
Cause you don't have a separate parking lot in neighborhoods, people just park in the driveway.
The developer can do some of these things if they want to sell the things.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna have to have guest parking and stuff like that, I mean. Do we have parking lots on apartment stuff? Do we have parking spaces designated for that in apartments?
What do you mean, like a minimum number required?
Then I'd use the same thing.
Okay. Let me see what that is, really quick.
If we have it for apartments, I'd make it, I'd make it different.
Nice.
Okay, multi-family, we only require one per dwelling unit. From multi-family.
Really? That's not, that, I agree with you, that's not enough for you for an apartment or a townhouse.
At least need two. And probably three normally, will be the best.
You got a kid.
That's the, that's the same for everything. The only thing that requires one and a half is a two-family dwelling, so, two black. Seems a little bit low.
It's a low bar.
Yeah.
I'd still say one, one handicap parking and at least five parking spaces.
Okay.
Regular spaces for every two units. Does it seem like too much? Not enough?
I, I think that's reasonable.
They got something to start with, and if they have a different design.
Yeah.
We can look at it.
Everything could be on a case by case basis, yeah.
You want a minimum.
Yep. Okay. Um, number of entrances, fire people, what are your?
At least two.
Like if there's X amount of acres or units or whatever, what, what do you feel like would be a good threshold for, if you have more than three units, you need to have some kind of secondary access? Do you, do y'all have any thoughts on that?
Mean access to the home or access to the lot?
To the, to the.
Property.
Property, yes.
That's, that, in the subdivision zone, and it says they have to have an emergency access.
It, for fif- fifty or more lots.
I didn't think it had that many of them, like twenty or more lots. But you don't have to look it up.
If we do the boulevard entrance, that's, that would help us, but I do know there's some townhomes that have a, a lock key gate, it's not for everyday people.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't have to.
You can access it.
Just some kind of emergency.
See, that's, that's what, see, most people don't know it, but over there in, in Oak Springs Plantation, if you go in there off of the road that Curves live on, it's a gravel road that goes back in there to the backside, is your emergency entrance. Back in there, goes right down by Curves property, I'm pretty sure. Might go through their property, but it goes anyway, goes, there's a gravel road, it's the emergency exit and end.
However, in the village, that might be really hard to do.
Yeah.
Because it's already so developed, getting another access might be very hard.
Would that access have to be VDOT standard?
No.
That could just be a.
Just urgency.
So, gravel road?
It could be gravel road.
Yeah.
I would consider it on. I would consider it on the amount of apart, amount of town, amount of townhomes.
Yeah.
Four, maybe not.
No.
Yeah.
Get up to eight.
Yeah.
Or.
Or twelve.
If you get up to two buildings, then maybe we put emergency access in, egress.
Twelve, okay, so twelve separate units, em, it's some kind of emergency access.
If you got, if you got more than two buildings of townhomes, have an emergency access.
How many, how many units you can put per building?
I don't know, we, we didn't decide earlier.
We was thinking about four, if you said.
We said.
In a strip.
We thought maybe.
Any attached in a strip.
Three to four.
Okay.
I think you start going over there and then you, it's more like apartments, it's not townhomes.
Yeah, I think four in a strip, probably.
Twelve, you know, I'd do four.
Four in a strip, okay.
Kinda. And if they only wanna do three, it's fine.
If you have two strips, you gotta have an emergency egress.
Okay.
Yeah, you got more, more than two.
Okay.
So if you got more than, more than eight units, they have to have emergency, emergency exit entrance. It could be somewhere where they go down the street to the edge of the parking lot and put a gravel road in.
Yeah.
It's gotta be.
Yeah, okay.
Probably be better for their parking lot. We bring this heavy tanker stuff in, that gravel road and through their paved parking lot anyway.
But that was my next, that was my next thing, what, does the building code say how many hydrants has gotta be in an area like it? The building's gotta be sprinkled, right?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, because, I, I don't know, cause they're separate dwelling. I don't, I don't know the building code well, at all. I, I don't know. That would be something to ask.
Most of the multi-story, multi-family dwellings that close together, I'd say we need to require them to be sprinkled. There's no, that's fair, I mean.
Well, I can, we can't require that in this, but the building code. If the building code requires it.
Department, and I had guys sitting up here at Company One, and they, they could be there in, in two minutes, not such a big deal, but. If I'm at home, it's gonna take me six or seven minutes to get to the fire station, get a truck, and then go drive there, so.
I'll ask Richard to come back tomorrow and see what is in the building code already.
Let's, let's consider requiring, I mean, we ought to do that for apartments too, they should be sprinkled.
Definitely.
Some idiots smoking in bed, sets the building on fire, it's not fair to burn my stuff up.
How many hydrants you wanted in there?
I think it ought to be one hydrant per every two units. It ain't the hydrant so much as the size of the water main. How much water can you get?
That's true.
You know? And I don't know that we can dictate that. There ought to be at least an eight inch water main coming in there. In my, in my, my opinion. You're, you're a professional, right, buddy? You tell me.
I wouldn't put a hi, I'd, I'd put a hydrant no less than five hundred feet to the building.
Oh, I, oh, I thought you were talking about how many, I was.
So how many, I mean.
One per every two units is what I was gonna say. No, one, not, not, not two, two buildings, one per every two, two buildings.
That's fine.
And then, and then, uh, I don't know, we can dictate the size, but it needs to be as big a water main as possible, cause if you got a building that size on fire, you gonna be.
Hit it hard.
Pulling a lot of water. You're gonna be pulling six inches plus two, three inches.
So you would, so you would say that hydrant would be in the middle of the two buildings, so you could.
I would say, I would say so.
Okay, I, I, I agree with that.
And then if he does three buildings, he's gonna have to add another hydrant. I mean, you gotta put the water lines in anyway to the buildings.
That's right.
Good. Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to both Daryl and Richard about the water main and hydrants and sprinklers and see what we already have on the books, um, and if we have nothing, then we can.
I mean, it's a six inch hydrant, it's gotta, it's gotta be at least a six inch line. It can't be smaller than that.
I would think it, I would think everyone would be in at least six.
I would think so.
I would think so.
For the, for the three or four.
That line going down Leedy Street's a five inch line, I understand. We had a fire back in there, somebody told me it's a five inch line.
How long has it been in there?
Oh, the, the water, water system hadn't been here for like seven, eight years. What did the water system before that? That was a Van Orville thing.
I think it's only a twelve coming up Moose Bridge.
Yeah, they undersized everything. They did it to Chicken Way, cheap, 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 cheap.
While we're on park.
For them.
While we on parking, is there any standards to, to with, and turning radiuses of parking lots? We wanna be able to get a fire truck and a bus, school bus needs to go in there.
All your, your parking lots should have a turning radius, the radius on the curbing should be no less than twenty-five feet.
All right, parking spots have to at least be a hundred and eighty square feet of either nine feet by twenty feet or ten feet by eighteen feet. Um, in parking lots, there should be a minimum of one handicap parking space for every fifty parking spaces. Distances between lanes of parking have to be a minimum of thirty feet.
Are you talking about owens there though, parking in owens?
Mm-hmm.
I know he's talking about, he's talking about, if we come in a boulevard entrance and the, and the buildings are facing the highway, can the truck make that turn?
Oh, oh, yeah, we're not gonna have any like dead ends. They would have to either like loop around or have something there. We're not doing.
These trucks are getting bigger and bigger all the time.
Yeah.
I know, I know that all the site plans we ever did, any sort of radius on the curbing is minimum of twenty-five feet, most times it's thirty-five feet.
We all, but, we all, we, we gotta be able to get in there.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that definitely needs to be in there.
Even if you put it in there, it'd meet standards at that time, or that could change.
Yeah, go for it.
You know, you get bigger truck.
I get bigger trucks always.
We abandoned this lighting thing. Are we gonna require lighting or how much we gonna require or, or just?
I think it's gonna be dependent on whether.
Just say the, the.
A lot of depending on where it would be.
Have a shared parking lot, there should probably be lighting.
Yeah, I mean, then.
But if everybody has their own private, I don't think.
Parking and then buildings on both sides, I think probably just put lights down the middle of that, probably be fine.
And I would think they would want to anyways. I think the apartments up here and maybe over here have at least a couple of streetlight.
How about, how about just say all, all parking lots will be illuminated from dust and all?
Yep, great.
Leave it like that?
Yep. Okay. Amenities and open space and things like that. Do we wanna get into that kinda stuff, um, or let them decide that? For some of these, it, it might not make sense if it's only, you know, four townhomes, they're probably not gonna have a. A community pool, cause there's only eight people living. You know, um, so I don't know if you wanna get into that.
I think y'all'd have a playground, keep the kids from playing in the street. Playground, they can put that over, swing set and slide. You got a playground, you know?
Well, then it, cause who, who maintains the playground, you know?
It's gonna be the homeowners association again. I'm assuming.
They had four houses, it probably won't have a homeowners.
Right.
They might, I mean, I mean, my in-laws lived in a townhouse up in northern Virginia and, and Alexandria, and they actually had to pay like a hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. The grass cut, the landscaping done, it was to maintain the park, all the, all the grounds, everything.
Can we require, actually?
I mean, right now, when people do subdivisions, if it's a major amount or a major subdivision, that is something that we ask for is the copy of their covenants and restrictions before. We approve the subdivision plan. Now, most of them are just paper HOAs and aren't actually in practice, but.
Well, they, the, the covenants don't do you any good unless you actually form an owner association.
Exactly, and the county can enforce them. We can enforce, um, subdivision.
Can't make them do it.
Right.
Only the homeowners association can enforce it.
Exactly.
Their, their county can't enforce it.
Same red field.
Yep.
So I don't know if for amenities and things, we say you have to do one or two of these if you exceed X amount of units, cause it might not.
I would say that, yeah, I'd say if you're over.
Eight.
Or if we wanna leave it.
They're over eight, cause everybody got a dead burned dog.
Just say the home, homeowners association is recommended, however, they're required when you exceed eight units.
Okay.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, all right, so.
All of them are required?
If you're over eight units.
If you're over eight units, development, yeah, it's gonna have to have a homeowners association.
Oh, oh, yeah.
You have.
No, 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 we, the amenities, I.
More units.
I mean, the community center is expensive, the dog park, I mean.
Pool.
Pool's expensive, that's expensive just to maintain. Anybody's gonna do a quality development is probably gonna do all that stuff.
That's kinda what I'm saying.
I would certainly, I would certainly require a playground, keeps the kids out, playing in the street and in the parking lot and all that stuff, gets them, gets them a place to go, keep them out of trouble.
You wanna do two of those?
What else you think?
That could be the sidewalk around it.
That's true, cause they also have to think, I mean, it is in the village, these parcels aren't huge.
Right.
Not gonna be able to do, but so much.
Are we requiring sidewalks? Do we?
I was gonna say, definitely.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we should.
Would just.
Connect to what is, so are we just gonna say you have to connect from your parcel to whatever is already there? Or we want them within the townhome development?
Well, they should, I mean.
Well, you can build a lot of places. We don't have sidewalks already, so I mean, where they go fifty foot in front of them, they walk back and forth, right?
Somebody, if somebody did this, did this. Actually, they did the one out here at the end of, end of Dunn Street, down here past Ken's office, there's a sidewalk that goes right up to Ken, around Ken's office. They wouldn't have to do anything, but the guy at the department said, you know, like the lucky dude property, he'd have to build a sidewalk up to business three sixty.
What about the end of Dunn Street?
See, that was what we wanted, that, into Dunn Street, you know, see, there's no sidewalks on Dunn Street at all.
Ain't got room down there, you know?
Probably require them within, within it.
Think just within it, because once they get outside of it, they're gonna have, if it's not dedicated at all, they're gonna have to be knocking on people's doors, trying to get them.
Someone was in the courthouse, car within the courthouse area.
Within.
No, within.
Complex.
Within the parcel itself, cause once you get outside of it, if that right of way hasn't been dedicated, they're gonna have to get every single person.
That, that's true. Well, let's, let's beat out those right of ways and then beat us.
That's what I'm saying, but some of these really old, um, streets and stuff, right of way wasn't dedicated, um. Okay, definitely sidewalks within.
The only reason I knew the sidewalk was, was about the apartment thing, I, VDOT, I was such a wide right of way, it's cause that's old, that's old three sixty. I mean, having a, you know, then it's sixty-six foot right away, I don't have that perfect. But, but then a little side street coming up across railroad tracks, I'm not sure if there was ever a right of way.
Well, you could put highly recommend playground, walking trails, cause walking trails, they can walk a dog on it.
Yep.
They won't be walking on the neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
They won't be walking up to the courthouse square or poop.
Yep.
But, uh.
Dogs never poop in their own yard.
But you could recommend it, highly recommend it. I don't think a community center for four, I mean, that'd be more like ten or twelve or twenty.
Yeah.
A lot of it's kinda case by case.
Yeah.
Well, if we got one, come in and put in, uh, six buildings, he's gonna try to put it on community.
Right.
Community center.
Baby.
And all that stuff and everything.
Okay, well.
We still get a chance to look at it anyway, so.
This gives me a lot to work with. Um, this was very productive. So I think at this point, if you all feel okay with this, I'll take all this feedback and work with Jeff and try to get some sort of draft ordinance put together. That'll probably take a couple of months and then maybe pull just you all back in to look over and make sure. It captures what we talked about and everybody feels good about it, and then if we feel good, presenting it to the whole planning commission for consideration.
If we, uh, if we do this again sometime.
Yeah.
Please send this out ahead of time, cause I would like to look through these different counties before.
No problem.
You know?
No problem.
Sure. Sure, we, while we're working on this apartment thing where they had one parking space. Could you put it in, from now on, it would be more than that single?
Yes.
I mean, could, that'd be amended.
On the apartment thing, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I didn't realize it said just one space, that's, that's ridiculous.
I mean, I'd be at least two.
At least.
Minimum.
Okay. Okay, so the parking, parking minimums need to be addressed.
Yeah, and then you gotta go ahead and fix that too.
Yeah.
Bye, back it on the list.
You figure you get one person, you got two people there at least, and then you figure maybe one space for a visitor.
Well, that one time, you know, it's probably one car for a family, that mean you got three or four cars.
And see, that's why I said five for every two units, because that gives two, two spaces to each unit and one visitor space to be shared.
With share between the two units.
I'm not sure we shouldn't go back and make, make a lot of the stuff match the apartment thing, so you don't have to remember what's, which one's which.
That's what, that's what I'm saying. The apartment thing need to be the same as this.
I agree, I agree.
That's why.